This meeting today is open to the public. There are no items that contain any exempt information. This meeting will be webcast and the recording will also be available for people to view later through the council's website. It's also possible that Sheffield Live TV will be recording and rebroadcasting this meeting. Please can I request that all mobile telephones and other such equipment are switched to silent mode so as to not disturb the conduct of this meeting. And there's no fire test planned for today, so if there is an emergency evacuation, please take instruction from town hall staff. Our assembly point is in Tudor Square. Please can I ask each committee member in turn to introduce themselves? I'm councillor Sophie Thornton, I'm deputy chair of this policy committee, subbing in for councillor Argentio today. So to my left.
Councillor Matt Dwyer, Burley Wood.
Good morning, councillor Riz Melson, I represent Crickshaw Crossford Ward.
Good morning, councillor Laura McLean, I represent Watford Ward, I'm group spokesperson for this committee.
Good morning, I'm councillor Julie Grokut from Stockbridge, I'm at the Don Ward.
Good morning, councillor Steve Ares from Grace Park Ward.
Good morning, councillor Dr Ross Sapwell from Standington Ward.
Thank you, can I ask officers to introduce themselves as well as well?
So, Alexis Chapel, Strategic Director for Adult Care and Wellbeing.
Morning, Sherry Grant, Assistant Director Legal and Governance.
Good morning, everyone, I'm Rachel Marshall and I'm Principal Committee Secretary. Thank you.
Fab, thank you. Right, so item one, apologies for absence, we've not received any apologies for absence, but we do have a note that councillor Argentio will be attending late, if there are any other that I should be aware of. Item two, exclusion of the press and public, meeting today is open to the public and there are no items on the agenda containing any exempt information. Item three, declarations of interest, does any member wish to declare an interest on any of the items of business on the agenda? I know I'll need to declare a peculiar interest on item 14, as that pertains to the SNP services, which I do work on, but as this committee is only noting it because Children's Committee have made a formal decision on that item, having spoken with legal, that should be, that is okay. Yeah, thank you. Item four, minutes of the previous meeting, so we'll need to go through the minutes of the previous meeting page by page, if there are any issues then please do shout. So, page one, page two, page three, page four, page five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, and 11. Have we all agreed that they're a true and accurate record of the previous meeting? Agreed, thank you. All right, so item five, public questions, petitions and statements, we've not received any public questions, petitions or statements for today's meeting. Item six, members' questions, we've also received no members' questions for today's meeting either. So, item seven is work programme. Rachel, I'll let you take over.
Thank you, Chair. If members would like to turn to page 25, which is where the work programme begins in the main agenda pack, on page 26 you will see there is a set of recommendations we will be asking the committee to approve. If you turn to page 28, you will be able to see some proposed additions and amendments in there, so that basically indicates the movement of items between the work programme, anything that's been removed that was on there and anything that may be new. So, you can see quite clearly in the table there that there is several new items. If we, I'm scrolling down but you'll be, because I'm looking at it digitally, but if you want to turn to the work programme which starts on page 31, which is where the tables are laid out for forthcoming meetings, including December meeting, I can appreciate, I can just see councillor Milson saying it's quite small, so if you are looking at that digitally, it might be, you know, a good idea to give that a good zooming because I can appreciate the text is quite small there, sorry about that, I was trying to fit all that text on those pages. So, yeah, that's the layout for the forthcoming meetings for this municipal year and that's for you to discuss as a committee, if you want to raise anything about these work programmes or items that are on there, feel free to do that and I will pass back to Chair now for any discussion around that and also to agree those recommendations. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Rachel. Does anyone have any questions or comments on the work programme? We all agreed to approve the recommendations? If any member wishes to dissent then please raise your hand. Fabulous, we will, that is carried, fantastic. So, for each of the substantive items on our agenda today, please could I remind everyone of the process that we're going to follow? Officers will be invited to present their reports to the committee, members and the public have had access to these reports in advance, so please assume that members have read the report and just provide a higher level summary. This will be followed by questions from the members to the officers. Once all the questions have been asked and responses provided, we will then move on to the discussion. After any discussion has taken place, the recommendations may be moved and seconded and taken to a vote. This will enable us to conduct the meeting, the business of the meeting smoothly and efficiently, so thank you all for your cooperation on that. We have a slight rejig to the agenda today, as wanting to move item 16 up to the start of the agenda for sensory strategy. So, if people wishing, people here to present item 16 sensory strategy, if you want to come to the microphones at the front, there should be some name cards on there, if you could find them and put them on the front of your benches, just so that the public can see who you are clearly. Thank you. So, item 16 is on page 313 of your agenda pack. Let officers sit down and get their name badges.
Tony Middleton, I'm a Service Manager for Future Options and responsibility for In-House Providers Services and the Sensory Impairment Team. And this is Sharon Hirschman, experienced adult social worker in the Sensory Impairment Team.
Hi, just to introduce myself, Sharon, and the interparticipating is Emma Dorber.
Okay, so we are bringing a report to seek approval, to co-design and develop a sensory impairment strategy for people with care and support needs and also to update on plans to design an adults sensory impairment service. So, we intend to develop a partnership board that will drive this work, made up of at least 50% people with a lived experience and also relevant agencies and services. Effectively, that is it, so it is to look at, there are lots of things that work against people with sensory impairment strategies, so we want to examine the city as a whole, certainly the council, access to the council and its services. We also want to use that co-design to look at how the social services offer, if you like, we're aware that, I've been doing some benchmarking and that we certainly need to develop it, but we want to know what's the best way to do that for the people of the city, so we're going to use that co-design. Do you want me to run through the detail in the report?
No, I think as members and public have access to these, and we should hopefully, I'm assuming, we're usually pretty good at reading all the papers on this, that members will have read this, so thank you for providing the good summary there. I'll open to the questions, if that's okay. Does anyone have any questions on this item? Councillor McLean?
Thank you, councillor Thornton, not any questions really, but just to say thank you, it's a really exciting piece of work and I look forward to hearing more about it as the strategy's developed and as committee members, I'm sure, are looking forward to supporting this work because it's really important. It's also just really good to see how much involvement people with lived experience are going to have, that's really important, so just to say thank you really, we look forward to seeing what happens next. Thank you.
If I could just add as well, in terms of people with lived experience, it's important that we make sure that the deaf community themselves are aware of these processes and aware of what's going on with the council, we're trying to break down the barriers and it's such important work, as you say, for people in the deaf community and the wider citizens of Sheffield.
Absolutely, I can echo councillor McLean's thanks there as well, because it's, as councillor McLean has said, it's a very important piece of work. Councillor, Dr Sapwell?
Thank you very much for this. As part of the wider strategic thinking, I'm not sure this is actually within the purview of this strategy, but how much of the strategy is about prevention of this, I'm thinking particularly about sight loss, diabetes, and are we working with the public health team to ensure that we are as part of a whole wider strategy and to prevent changes to, you know, sensory disability as it were?
This particular strategy is predominantly about access to services, but that said, I'm hoping through the partnership board that we can help inform that kind of, that we will be bringing in people from health services etc. So, that should be, that will have a much bigger scope than this particular strategy.
And just to add as well, if I may, it will influence the access that people have, as people learn about the access issues and the barriers that people face, they will make changes to services in the first place. So, the key things at the moment are to, you know, resolve the access issues across the city and that hopefully will filter down to diabetes clinics, eye clinics etc. So, it's very much a trickle down sort of process, so the key thing to start with is remove these barriers for access in the first place and then hopefully things will progress from there.
Excellent, thank you. The recommendations are for approval on page 314, so it's recommended that the Adult Health and Social Care Policy Committee note and endorse the co-design and development of a Sheffield Adult Sensory Impairment Strategy, note the planned design of an adult sensory impairment service, and note and endorse that the commissioning of equipment for people with a sensory impairment will be considered as part of the redesign of a joint equipment service. Are we all agreed? Agreed. Fantastic, thank you very much.
Sharon's just saying, I just want to really thank you all for the opportunity to allow us to come and present this, it's been a long time, it's been a long time coming and I really appreciate your support, I feel really emotional myself because I've spent my career working towards this, so thank you.
Right then, so we'll head back up the items to item eight, local accounts, so this is on page 35 of the agenda pack. Presenting officer, is it supposed to be David? Fantastic, if you could find and pop your name badge on the front please for the public, that would be great. Fab, thank you, could you introduce yourself please?
It's David Stevenson, Care Governance Officer of Sheffield City Council. Thank you. So, this report item is about the local account for adult social care for Sheffield. This is a non-statutory document, but it's a document that is recommended as best practice that local authorities publish. The intention is that it acts as a public account of performance for the local authority in regards to its adult social care. The report, as it states, is asking committee to approve and authorise officers to develop the local account as a public website as opposed to a written document as it has been done previously. The report sets out a number of recommendations and reasons as to why we think this would be a good idea. Previously, the local account has been a written document published in the autumn of each year and that's meant that the data within it has been looking back into the past financial year. We think with a website, we can keep the data more live, relevant and up to date in terms of making it more relevant for people and members of the public and anybody who's interested in social care in Sheffield. We also think that through a digital website, there's greater opportunities for engaging members of the public and getting greater reach. The report does note the potential risk of digital exclusion, but we think that this can be well mitigated by making sure there's lots of opportunities for people who don't have digital access to either see the local account through, for example, our library services or if necessary by printing documents. Because the existing local account has always been a written document too, it means that because it's done on an annual cycle, that there's limited opportunity to actually improve it or change it throughout the year, but this is something that we can kind of look at throughout the year so we can get, respond to feedback from members of the public if they want to see different information about social care in Sheffield, or if we get feedback about the narrative or whatever. So, I think one last point I'd like to make too is that the report, because it will be like on a digital website, it means that we can link it into other online resources around social care, such as what we've got around the Sheffield Adult Safeguarding Partnership, so we think there's some good opportunities for linkage there, also including the Sheffield Directory. Have to take any questions from committee?
Thank you, I've got a few hands up already, so councillor Grokut, you were first up.
Thank you, thanks for the report, I think it's an exciting opportunity for us as a city to be able to make sure that we are giving people real lifetime information. You did touch on it about people who are digitally excluded, we do have a large percentage of people who are digitally excluded, in my own ward 23% of people are, so I think it's important that from the offset, we do set out as part of this programme, the other means of accessing, not we're going to do, we might do, but that we, you know, so that there is a clear plan there for people who are digitally excluded so that they can see that. I also think there's, you know, it's important for us to understand across the council how in real time we will be using the information, because obviously previously it's been an annual account, so we've been able to look at the information annually and decide what we may need to change, fix, alter, amend, whatever. Now we're getting that information real time, it could be interesting to see how we're going to move things along in real time, because I think it's an opportunity that mean that we will have to be able to provide better services more quickly to people because we've got that information. So again, it's about understanding how that will happen and also how often this will come to us as a committee so that we can understand when we will be looking at that information and how decisions will be made on the back of all of that, which I know is quite a lot, but hopefully it will all make things a lot more seamless and will mean that we are offering far better services because we've got the information that we need to do so, so thank you very much for the report.
Absolutely understand the points around digital exclusion and the risks around that insofar as the availability of data, because data, most data nationally is published on an annual or a six month base, we'd probably look to develop a reporting schedule on it still that's kind of formal and we can of course involve members in that to make sure that you're aware of all of our current performance and where that stands. Another point to make too is of course we'll make sure that what we're reporting in the local account matches up with all of the other performance reporting that we do to make sure that we're not, that we're all on the same page with that and that we're fitting within the existing reporting cycles.
Thank you, I've got councillor Ares and then councillor Dwyer.
Thank you, Chair. It's just in terms of the accessibility of the information and how members of the public interact, and it links back to a discussion we had at the Health Exclusion Subcommittee when Health came along and presented a report and we talked about, or remember the public, a lot of people don't interact with a website, but more and more people are using apps and I just wonder, not necessarily at this point in time, but in the future, I mean, whether or not we could explore how we can interface with, you know, phone apps that might enhance the way that people, you know, people that we don't normally reach can access the information and also, you know, input into any future local account.
And so I would say we've been linked in with the Future Sheffield Programme, which is a corporate digital programme, so we'll make sure we keep linked in with them, if there's any opportunities about disseminating the local account further or engaging people through the local account through sort of new and innovative ways, through digital platforms, we'll absolutely make sure that we get on board with that and get involved with that.
Councillor Dwyer?
Thank you, and this is a really positive step, but on the Audit Standards Committee last week, there were statements made about the annual government statement not being a particularly useful document for the public, so this is a real positive way of improving our governance, as long as it is accessible and relevant, so I was just wondering how will the online portal be accessible to the public so they can use it in a clearer way than they can a document?
And so the intention would be to develop it as an iterative document, so we'd certainly be going out to members of the public to understand their views on the local account, to make sure that we're continually updating it. It would be a much more visual document than anything that we might publish in, say, committee report format. And I think too, it's quite important that we'd be seeking members of the public's views on the actual content, which is always what we've done historically with the local account, to understand what data actually is relevant to people, because we know there's an awful amount of, lot of data we collect in adult social care and publish, but we need to understand what's relevant to people and what matters and we can absolutely tailor the local account to that. There's also opportunities for improved accessibility compared to the existing written account because we can make sure that the digital site is compatible with screen readers for instance and that more people can access it in that way. And I think there's also some opportunities with the platform that we're looking at developing the local account and of including interactive multimedia such as videos and also potentially interactive diagrams and slider type diagrams as well, so hopefully that will help with that engagement.
Thank you, I've got councillor Milson and then finally councillor Dr Sapwell.
Thank you, Chair, thanks very much for the report, I find this really interesting work and particularly liking the emphasis on it being a document that's of interest to members of the public and not, you know, not just something although it's reported to this committee, it's, you know, its interest is far beyond members of this committee, so I think that's really good. I wondered about whether our libraries might be able to facilitate access to council documents like this and whether that's a good mitigation potentially to digital exclusion, because some people do use libraries as a way of accessing digital facilities that they can't access at home, or feel less confident accessing at home and there's digital training through library settings and so on, so I wonder whether library staff might be approached to support access to the local account and in fact other documents, you know, things like the city goals and Sheffield Plan, fair and healthy Sheffield Plan, housing strategy, all sorts of things that might be of interest to the public that could be facilitated through our libraries perhaps, and maybe libraries could advertise the existence of these documents in digital form within the library setting?
Yes, absolutely, I think that's a really good point, very happy to liaise with library staff. I know that libraries do support, for instance, around like other engagement that we do such as around local plan and planning applications and things like that, so absolutely, I think there's an existing opportunity there that we can maximise for this.
Fab, councillor Dr Sapwell?
Thank you very much for this, I really welcome the move to make all of this data in the wider sense more contemporaneous. In terms of making this easy to digest for the public, more accessible and indeed to health and social care staff too, could we possibly have a dashboard? And each NHS trust has an A&E dashboard, it kind of gives information about waiting times for triage, medical review, average waiting time in a department, I was just wondering if we could have that for social care as well, like which patients are waiting for discharge, which patients are medically fit and whatnot, because I mean, it would just be for greater accountability and transparency to the barriers for discharge, sharpen the minds of us in the council, sharpen the minds of clinicians in hospitals and our partners in care. It also works the other way in that these dashboards show the scale of the workload, the A&E dashboard, so just how many visits to A&E there are, and so it can help us see what the demand is and the public would see the huge amount of good work our care sector provides. A dashboard would also look really good and councillor Ares has an apt idea. I'd just like to make it known that I'd be very happy to share my experiences, screenshots of what I've seen to help make this happen, because I think this would just be a way of making this data really easy to digest for someone who doesn't want to read a long document but just wants to see a snapshot of everything. Thank you.
So, corporately, I know that we've been looking into our usage of Power BI, which is a really powerful dashboard tool. I'm not 100% at the moment where that conversation's up to corporately, but certainly I think there's a really good opportunity around there about us having live dashboards. Internally, we do use dashboards, but of course we've, we need to be careful about what level of data we share publicly, of course, in line with GDPR and the Coldwell Cup principles, but absolutely, I know that's becoming increasingly what people expect in terms of performance data and making it accessible and transparent, so certainly have to look at any examples and I'll pick up the conversation corporately around where our Power BI sort of usage and status is. I know it's something we've been looking at corporately, thank you.
Thank you, have you got any more further questions on this? Nope, fine, this, right, so the recommendations for approval are on page 37 of our agenda packs, so that is for the Adult Health and Social Care Policy Committee, we are recommended to note and endorse the adult care strategy and local account of performance becoming a web-based microsite, and to approve and authorise officers to develop the adult social care strategy and local account of performance microsite, and to update the microsite as new data becomes available. Are we all agreed? That is carried unanimously, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so we'll move swiftly on to item nine, which is adult care and wellbeing, market sustainability and commissioning update and the approval of the 24/25 care fees, this is on page 53 of your agenda pack. And, yep, Catherine's got her name badge, fabulous. Could you introduce yourself for the webcast please?
Hi, my name's Catherine Bunton, I'm the Director of Quality, Strategy, Delivery and Partnerships. So, committee will know that we aim to bring our proposals for fee rates the next financial year as early as possible, it supports us in our planning and it supports providers to be able to do their financial planning too. This report isn't fully able to do that, but it sets out the current modelling that we've got based on the increases to national minimum wage and inflation, and notes at paragraph 1.15, the other contextual factors that are in play this year and what we'll be working on over the next couple of months to finalise those proposals. The recommendations are that committee notes the delivery plan for market The recommendations are that committee notes the delivery plan for market sustainability provided for information in the appendix, notes our process of the app for proposing fee rates to 25/26, given those contextual factors. And if I could just make a slight amendment to the third recommendation, please, which is that committee ask officers to bring back final proposals for fee rates at the earliest opportunity, using an emergency committee if necessary and if time allows.
Okay, I will open to questions if we have any. Councillor Millsom?
Yes, thank you. Thanks, Catherine. I mean, I fully support the benefit of calling an emergency meeting in the new year. It seems the only time it can really be discussed fully, as we don't know the full picture yet.
I'd like to interrupt councillor Millsom, just to clarify that it's not, it won't be an emergency committee meeting, it'll be an extraordinary.
Okay, so it wouldn't be an urgency, I was going to question the terminology of that.
We've just been discussing it.
It's either an emergency subcommittee or it's an extraordinary meeting.
It's an extraordinary meeting.
That's just, it's a technicality, but it has to be said, yeah. So, I mean, I like that approach and I like the idea of it being a single topic meeting as well, which I think will be very helpful to focus us on the important matter in hand. So I'm sure, well, I hope everyone else supports it as well, I certainly do. And I think it'll be a very useful time to do it and support the idea of bringing the discussion, opening the discussion up as early as possible with providers.
Yeah, fabulous. Councillor Dr Satwell, did you add your hand up?
Excellent. I think we're all in agreement that our social care staff are due pay rights, so I am glad to see this, we've just got to figure out how to pay for it all. When will we know from national government, you know, what kind of mitigations we're going to get in terms of national funding, especially with the national insurance increases as well? And how much money, I just wonder what the impact with some of our more private care providers, will they be getting rebate for national insurance contributions? Or is that part, is that going to be passed on to us as a council to have to pay for increased fees?
I think some of that lobbying and discussion is still happening with central government. We are expecting our sort of financial settlement towards the end of this year with more detail. And there's some indication that there'll be longer-term information available to councils about their budgets coming as we get into spring, which might help us with some of that planning. And again, it might be something, as councillor Millsom said, if we're having an extraordinary committee with a single focus, we can consider some of that longer-term planning with the market as well.
Yes, so just to come back on that, so we will get a settlement idea towards the end of this year. And so we'll have our extraordinary meeting then and then hopefully in spring we'll have maybe a much longer-term kind of view of things and maybe have another meeting about the long-term strategy then.
Yeah, I mean, so we bring a quarterly-ish update on our market sustainability committee regularly anyway. So certainly as the financial picture for local authorities becomes clearer, we're able to respond to that as and when. You've also asked a question about the different makeup, the sort of mixed market that we have in the adult social care sector. And that's certainly something that we want to work on in the next couple of months really with providers to understand the differential impact that some of these policy changes will have. Our recommendations for how we support the market overall, given that differential impact, including, you know, specific questions around staff and workforce makeup and any impact on them, private fee payers, what providers might be able to do to mitigate and how we collectively respond to some of those challenges.
Wonderful. And if, in which case, I would just make a plea to my Labour colleagues that you lobby upwards within your party internally, don't you know that this funding is forthcoming? Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Does anyone else have any further questions or comments on this? Councillor McLean?
Just to briefly, I'll repeat councillor Millsom's comments to save time, but just to say thank you really for the work that's going on behind the scenes. I know we've got this engagement event with providers on the 20th of December. It's a busy time of year and I just to thank everyone, all the officers behind the scenes and the care providers themselves who are doing the work on this at this time of year is just much appreciated. And I just know, we know when we've had care providers come to committee recently, you know, we know that there's that sense that people are really working together in the city and that's really developed over the last few years. So just to say thank you for that, because it's just so important to have in that sustainable care market in Sheffield. So thank you.
Thank you. I think that's a really useful comment about the provider engagement actually and the strength of the conversations we're having. So I kind of echo that. Thanks to the providers for working with us to overcome some of the challenges that we face. It's really essential if we're going to do it in a long-term way.
Fabulous, thank you, Catherine. Has anyone else got anything to add? Right, so recommendations are for approval on page 54. As Catherine mentioned, there's a slight amendment to recommendation three, but we are recommended to note the market oversight, delivery plan for the quarter three, 24/25. So note the process for proposing fee rates for council contracted providers in the financial year 25 to 26. And approve the proposed extraordinary committee meeting, which I've had confirmation will be on the 22nd of January at 10am at 2025, to progress free rate proposals for 25/26 at the earliest opportunity. Are we all agreed? That is carried unanimously. Thank you, Catherine. Right, so we'll move on to item 11, which is the Carer's Strategy Delivery Update. That is on page 110. Oh, that's ignore me, it's because I've got things scribbled out and that made me think that that was the other item. Item 10, Adult Health and Social Care Quarterly Finance and Governance Update, which is on page 83 of your agenda pack. If officers want to come to the microphone and make sure that you put your, find your name badge and put it over the front for the webcast, please. Fabulous. If you want to introduce yourself for the webcast?
Morning, everyone. My name's Jonathan McKenna-Moore. I'm the Service Manager for Business Planning and Governance. So this is the quarterly update on our financial position and recovery plan. So this looks back at the position as reported on at the end of quarter two. So the position was forecasting a 9.5 million overspend for the end of the year. Compared to quarter one, we were reporting 9 million. Within that change, there's been an improvement on our staffing overspend, that's reduced due to some additional funding becoming available. But our purchasing budget has increased, the spend has increased. And that is mainly due to some high-cost packages coming through in transitions as people have, younger adults have left education over the summer. So that's where that increase has come from. I've put some context into the report, looking back over the last few years on the savings that have gone into business planning, just to understand sort of how we arrive at our current forecast position. And I've broken those down by the savings that were delivered by additional income coming in and those that were based on trying to reduce costs. So hopefully that just sort of gives you a bit of background to the business planning process over the last five years or so. On the BIPs that go into the budget, there's been no change since last quarter. We're still forecasting 94% delivery. That's mainly based on income, so we're not expecting that to change. Just to explain, corporately, it's reporting 96%. That's because it's looking at a larger amount. It's including the additional adult social care grant and because we just assumed that, we don't include that in our reporting, that's why there's a slight discrepancy in the reporting there, but it is the same numbers. So last quarter, we were looking at optimised care and report that that's now started. And that's building up as part of the service redesign in living and ageing well, short-term care. And we've seen a reduction in the volume of people in somewhere else to assess beds. On the recovery plan, we're reporting 74% delivery. That's reduced slightly from last quarter. We've revised the expected impact of reviews and enablement work. That work is happening, it's just not delivering the savings in year that we were expecting at the start of the year. In response, we are putting additional capacity into the areas that we've realised that there's pressure, so around transitions, we've put some additional staff in to look at high-cost fee rates that are outside of our framework. We're looking at tech-enabled care and we're recruiting some capacity in there. And we're looking at capital investment as well in order to find, in order to increase the market options for some of the high-cost placements that we're seeing. In terms of the staffing position, going forward into next year, we are putting in pressures for the multi-agency safeguarding hub and commissioning services in order to secure budgets for those. That would leave the main area of staffing overspend in the short-term intervention service. And as I mentioned earlier, that is part of current review of how that service operates in terms of how it delivers around hospital discharge and the optimised care work and the tech-enabled care. There's a, next section is on our business planning process, that's going, budget is going through at the moment. We've had some good news there in terms of the temporary grants that we were uncertain around last quarter, they've now been confirmed for next year. So that's been some good news going forward. And as was reported on the last paper, there is the impact of national living wage and national insurance contributions. So I won't go into that, because obviously that's been picked up by previous paper. And then there's a section on where we're at with our governance improvements, just in terms of improving our financial accountability across the service. And then there's just some highlights from the national benchmarking that's been carried out by local government association. The main sort of takeaway from that is we are still seeing an increase in spend on younger adults. So again, that goes back to why we're putting the additional capacity into transitions. Okay.
Thank you. I'll open to some questions. Councillor Ares, your hand was up first and then I'll go to councillor Brokaw and then councillor Dr Satwell.
Yeah, thanks, Jonathan. I wonder whether you just clarify, you said, I think you said it, part of the recovery plan, looking at fee rates outside the framework. Can you just explain that to me? I'm quite impressed by my own mind what those are.
Yeah, I'm not the expert, but basically, we have a lot of providers, we have a framework rates that are agreed with providers, so they will, we will try and place people ideally on framework, a pre-agreed framework rate. But where that provider might not be available, then we might use another provider that's not using the framework and then that's an individually negotiated fee. So where the fees are individually negotiated, then that's where a lot of the high-cost placements derive.
Thank you. Councillor Brokaw?
Thank you. Thank you for the report. I don't envy having to do all this work. It's just a continuous moving feast and it can't be that easy to do. And so thank you for laying it out so well, so that it is comprehensive and quite easy to understand. It's just some probably reassurance I'm looking for really more than anything, because I think 2.93, the key points to note, some of the figures in there in relation to where we are in Sheffield are quite alarming in terms of overspend when comparing us with other authorities. And the other page before 2.8, we've got the governance improvements. So I suppose it's just asking for reassurance that the things that we are putting in place in terms of the governance improvement programme is definitely going to address the issues that we've got here, not just looking at the wider picture of the budget, but also the fact that when we look at comparators, we are above in a number of areas that are listed out on your key points. So it's just reassurance about that, you know, that is going to narrow and get us flatlining out there, hopefully for the budget for next year. So it's just some reassurance about that. And then, you may or you may not be able to comment, but at full council last week, we had a motion about, from the Labour Group, about zero hours contracts. And do we need to be looking at doing some work in relation to the impact of zero hours contracts moving forward, given the motion that's been passed? Thank you.
Okay, so to address the first issue, on the benchmarking, it is a useful exercise, it is a useful thing to look at, but it is important to note that Sheffield is a core city and when you compare it to other core cities, we are not as much of an outlier. The demographic profile of core cities is radically different to other parts of the country and that's why you get a different profile of young adults with disabilities living in core cities and therefore the associated costs. So that's, it kind of, it comes to being a large city that, so yeah, but it does sort of identify that as an area of pressure. And then, so one of the main things, in answer to your question about the governance improvements, one of the main things we're sort of trying to bring forward, and should see this in the new year, it's in place in some parts of the service already, is the best practice forums that are referred to, where we can have a more scrutiny and more reflection on those high-cost packages and learn more across the service. And then, and have that learning feed into commissioning as well, rather than, so one of the main things I've been keen to do over the last few years is to make sure that the intelligence of decision-making in service feeds through into other parts of our directorate and especially commissioning, so that it's more joined up. So yeah, that hopefully will address that issue. I'm not in a position to comment on the second part of your question about zero hours contracts, I'm sorry.
Thank you. I've got councillor Dr Satwell and then councillor Dwyer.
I just want to thank you and recognise the difficult work you're doing. You keep talking about overspends, but actually, what the council's in a position here is essentially, you're the ones with the tight budgets, but then you're providing savings on a more national level, i.e., you talk about the overspends on transitional care, but the fact is investing in these young people means that you're saving the NHS huge amounts of money over the long run. So thank you for the work that you do within the tight budget that you've got to, you know, make real differences to people's lives, but also on a national economy scale, you're doing absolutely great work. You'll always have our Lib Dem backing when it comes to providing extra social care. And I just hope the funding is on its way so that we can, you know, because we're not going to save the NHS until we really invest in social care and actually, you know, make sure that people can leave hospital on time, stay healthy in their own homes. Thank you.
Thank you, yes. Yeah, it is important to see that when we report on things like a staffing overspend, that is compared to the budget that's available, but it is, that work is delivering huge savings to the wider system, so it is an investment.
Thank you. Councillor Dwyer?
Yeah, thank you so much. It was just on the slippages in the BIPs and the recovery plan, in that there looks like in the appendixes one and two, really good ways of getting back in line. It was only on proportionate care review, there seems to be not clear why we've slipped and that's quite a large number. And then on the recovery plan, it was the future options, it just says additional resources to be allocated. And the only reason I'm picking up is everything else is like very detailed. And the only reason I'm picking up is everything else is like very detailed, this is how we'll get back in. So are you able to just go into a bit more detail about how we plan on getting those back to meeting those targets? Because the only ones were really slipping behind them.
Yep, certainly. So on the optimised care work, yes. The, the options for delivering that changed in the early part of the year. So that's why there was initially some slippage and then it moved to the new optimised care team that's now started. And as I say, that, that is sort of starting at a small level and building up as part of the service redesign going into next year. So we're kind of trying to build the right platform going into next year. The second, excuse me, my mouth has gone very dry. I'll be back in.
Alex, this is gonna, yeah, John, so I come in.
To support our response to these is that the proportionate care, part of that's been about how we've developed the service. And so one of the things that we've noted within the paper from Jonathan and the team is that the additionality of income that we've received has managed to offset for this year. And that's given us a good foundation going into next year. So what, what this has done in effect, so I think the, you know, I think last year if you knew we were going to get additional income, we'd probably have suggested less against proportionate care for this year. And then put that as more as a baseline recovery for next year. But I think that actually what we've done is we worked with the teams involved and that gives us a good foundation for going forward. And I think one of the things I've really learned over the last four years is to get the, to deliver and continue to deliver. It's really about bringing our workforce with us and developing a good foundation to do that. So I think that's the first thing in terms of proportionate care. Then in terms of adult future options, we've got two things on board. We've got the, part of the business planning, we've developed a new review team to go and support the work that's underneath us. And you want to actually have that invest to save and invest to grow approach. And then, then secondly, as part of that, what we've also done is we're bringing in an external agency to go and support us. I'm not sure we're able to say that in the public domain, but a certain consultancy agency to go and support us, to go and particularly support around the working age adults, because we know, and it's actually Sheffield is no different from anywhere across the country. There was a recent report published which highlighted the increase in costs, you know, supporting of working age adults. And for us, you know, we're working with, going to be working with an agency who are doing that nationally. So I think that will help us to go in not only baseline, but get a good foundation for the future. So it's probably just helpful to kind of note is that some of the data that's in the report around the learning from the use of resources review, that relates to last year's data. So what I'm hoping to see is this year, when we get this year's data next year, that may work, is that we'll be able to see a continued positive trend, you know. And I think it's just sometimes the challenges of working behind, a year behind. And that's where actually the work by David earlier on about going to a more transparent local account and publishing online data, I think will help us get more live data for going forward. So hopefully that's helpful.
Thank you Jonathan. Do you have anything to add to that?
Only that the, I think the slippage you're referring to, a lot of that is in the accommodation area. And as I touched on earlier, we are resources into our, in our capital plans for, and also working with our providers to increase the options in the market there. So, but that, that is a slower process. That's why it's sort of spaced out in that appendix over three years now. But it is moving forward, which is positive.
Thank you. Finally councillor Milson, you have a question?
Thank you Chair. Yeah, I just wanted to provide a bit of context around what councillor Brokaw raised about the the motion that was passed up for council last week. So just, because press and public do obviously watch these meetings, so there might be a bit of a lack of context around that. So it was a motion supporting new employment rights for Sheffield workers. The specific bit I think councillor Brokaw was referring to is stating a belief that we should find ways to improve rights and conditions for people on zero hours contracts. And that that's a national ambition really, rather than demanding anything happen locally. So it doesn't have an impact locally, other than that I presume we all disapprove of exploitative zero hours contracts. And we are committed to the Unison Ethical Care Charter, which does have a statement about zero hours contracts and that they shouldn't be used in place of permanent contracts for home care workers. But that's not Jonathan's business and it's, it's not a new demand that we're making locally through that motion, just to be, add a bit of context around that.
Thank you councillor Milson. Does anyone else have any other further comments or questions? Excellent. The recommendations for this report are on page 84. They are to note the update on the forecast outturn for 2024/25 financial year. To note the update on planned savings, recovery actions and mitigations. To note the update on staffing budgets and underlying risk mitigations to address the overspends. To note the significant risks in relation to the delivery of adult social care provision from the 1st of April 2025, if the discharge grant and market sustainability and improvement fund are discontinued without adequate alternative funding. And number five, to note the risk due to impending changes to national insurance contributions for employers. This includes the impact on care sector providers and the potential knock-on effect on cost pressures to the council. Are we all in agreed on those recommendations? If any member wishes to dissent, you can raise your hand. Fab, that's all agreed unanimously. Thanks Jonathan. So now we will move on to item 11, which is the carers' strategy delivery update. This is on page 107 of your agenda packs. If officers could come to the front and grab your name badges, put them up for the webcast, that'd be excellent. Thank you. Excellent. If officers could introduce themselves for the webcast please.
Good morning, I'm Mary Gardner. I'm Strategic Commissioning Manager for direct payments and unpaid carers.
Good morning, I'm Kevi Jones-Kenser. I am the CEO at Sheffield Carers Centre.
Good morning, my name is Lee T. Del Smith. I'm a commission officer with the council.
Thank you. Where are you going?
Okay, thank you. So we've come to committee today to talk to you about an update on the carers' delivery plan, 22 to 25. The original delivery plan was agreed at committee in December 22. This report is today is four recommendations. One to note the positive progress made by the carers' delivery plan. Two, to reaffirm our commitment to people that are unpaid carers across the city, so they feel recognised, valued and supported. We'd like you to acknowledge the actions that have been taken already and that are to be taken that will drive positive change for carers. And number four, to recognise and request that the city partners support, to support the work in partnership and to contribute and generate income for further work and support, so value carers across the city. So I guess the reason why we're here today is really to focus on carers. And one of the carers recently said to us, to capture the essence of that. They said, carers need all kinds of different support from lots of different agencies, including health services. And health services and social care need to work to know about and look after carers, as well as just the people that they need support across the city. So our vision is that the city, Sheffield is a city where carers are valued and have the right to support, the right to support to continue to care as long as they want to. Our carers' delivery plan is a multi-agency plan working across the city. And it's to ensure that our young carer, parents and adult carer strategy delivers the commitments to carers. The delivery plan holds us to account and makes it clear to carers what actions we're going to take to help them have positive lives. Just a bit of background context, there's actually 60,000 carers in Sheffield, 7,000 of which are young carers. And they provide essentials to support people within our society. Carers are vital within our community and without the unpaid workforce, our health and social care systems would be severely under pressure. New research from the Carers Centre for Care has found the economic value for carers is 184 billion across the UK. So in Sheffield, we need our carers to thrive. Together, we must be proactive and respond to carers' needs. We need to focus on supporting carers, but also reducing and preventing delays to support that they need at the time that they need it. Caring can be incredibly rewarding, but for some it's also very difficult. Supporting our carers via the delivery plan is the right thing to do for us across the city. So I'm now going to pass you over to Kerry to talk about some of the highlights that have been achieved this year in the delivery plan.
Thanks Mary. We know that together we can get things done. And the delivery plan embodies, embedges, embodies even, the council value. The delivery plan is multi-agency with key partners such as Sheffield Teaching Hospitals, Sheffield Integrated Care Board, Sheffield Health and Social Care Trust, Sheffield City Council, Sheffield Young Carers and my own organisation, Sheffield Carers Centre. All of the organisations actively contribute to the delivery of the plan. One of the key aims of the plan is to identify and support more carers. Carers aren't static. We have about 20,000 people stop caring every year and about 20,000 people start caring. So we constantly need to raise awareness and reach more carers. So we are clearly identifying and supporting more carers across the city. And some of the key highlights since unpaid carers came to committee in March are adult care and wellbeing recorded the highest ever number of referrals to the carers centre in July, with 162 referrals, including 121 new registrations. Sheffield Carers Centre registered the largest number of carers in a three-month period between July and September with 698. And up to the end of September, there was 1,970 carers that were newly registered with us, which is on track to beat the number that we reached last year, which was 2,138. Sheffield Young Carers have produced a video for health and social care professionals and to help them identify and support young carers. Sheffield Health and Social Care Trust, inpatient wards, care homes and crisis teams have achieved the first star on the triangle of care quality standard. And this is aimed at including and supporting carers. During Carers Week, which is in June each year, nurses provided mini-health checks to ICB and council staff who are carers. And this was supported with advice and guidance from the Carers Centre. And the Carers Centre universal service supports adults in their communities through groups, activities, workshops, et cetera. And these are decided based on what carers tell us that they require. And so this year, we have developed three new groups. One is on art. There is also nine men's groups, made up of 405 men. And 18 menopause groups, which is made up of 542 members. These numbers keep increasing. And what we are, what we are doing is trying to support all these carers to stop them going into crisis so they are able to continue caring for their cared-for people. I'm now going to hand over to Lee, who's going to talk through what we want to achieve in the next six months.
Thanks Kerry. So as Kerry mentioned, just in terms of what we'll have, what we want to do over the next six months. We want to identify and support even more carers. So we've made progress, I think in part due to the delivery plan. We're getting to more carers, we're supporting more carers, we want to keep that going. The thing about identifying more carers is it does put pressure on the system financially speaking. So we want to try and identify more funding that we can put into support services for carers. There are things that we can jointly promote coming up, so Young Carers Action Day, which is on the 12th of March. There's also Carers Week as well, which is coming around again, and that's the 9th to the 15th of June. One of our partners, Sheffield Teaching Hospitals, are looking at including support for carers and their training. And this is on induction and precepturship. And that's for allied health professionals and healthcare support workers as well. So that's really positive in terms of identifying more carers at point of health. And yeah, there are many more actions there that we're coming up with that are in the delivery plan, which is appendix one in full. So I think hopefully from what we said today, it's clear that carers are at the heart of what we're trying to do. The delivery plan will continue to take action for carers across the city. Because yeah, they're vital and I think the statistic that Mary mentioned earlier around 284 billion just shows the vast contribution that carers make to our health and social care system. So it's really important that we keep going and keep supporting them. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for a very thorough and meaningful report. I think we all appreciate the work that you do around this committee. First, I've got questions from councillor Ares and then councillor Dr Satwell, councillor Argenzia.
Yes, thanks for the report, very positive report, very encouraging. Thanks for all the hard work that you've all put into it. As long as I can remember, there has been this issue about identifying, you know, the hidden carer angle, you know. Identifying just how many carers there are. And I suppose my question is, I mean, can you, what were your thoughts on, have we progressed in that area in identifying those hidden carers? Have we got a truer picture now? Or are we sort of going backwards or are we progressing?
So certainly within social care, we are working really hard to identify carers. We've had a lot of awareness sessions for social work staff. We also have an operational group which is very much focused at the heart of social work, which is thinking about ways that we can support carers better and how we can identify them. We've been particularly doing some work with Sheffield Young Carers where they're producing a video to support adult social care staff in recognising young carers and knowing what the signs are when they visit people in their own home to recognise young carers. And that's due to be launched early next year. And that's been directly made by young, young carers, saying this is what you need to look for. So that's something that's really positive. I think absolutely we're moving in the right direction. But as Kerry said, the move of carers is so transitional and they change all the time. And often the statistics suggest that it takes about two years for someone to recognise that they're actually a carer. And that's something that will take time to break down. But certainly the awareness sessions that we've won, some of the functions that we've had in carers' weeks, the how the multi-agency approach works, we're certainly trying to promote the idea of what a carer is. And to help people to recognise themselves as carers and to be able to come forward.
Can I just add to that? We, we are constantly trying to raise awareness and working across the partnership. Because what we don't want is carers to come to us when they're in crisis. And because it takes up to two years to identify yourself, a lot of the time they have gone into crisis or reaching there. If we can reach them earlier, we can ensure that we are supporting them. And that's why we are constantly doing awareness raising sessions and working in partnership across the multi-agency group to try to get people earlier. I think it's working, but you can't stop because of the nature of caring.
Okay, thank you councillor Dr Setwell.
Could we, as a council, provide more support to those unpaid carers affected by the carers allowance scandal? Thank you, Mary, for laying out not just the wider society, but the economic benefit that such people provide. We owe it to our unpaid carers, as far as I'm aware, as far as I'm concerned in Sheffield, that should they unintentionally fall foul of the carers allowance thresholds, that we can then signpost them to all the help they need to a fair financial settlement on that. Let me be very clear that the Lib Dems do not believe we should be asking unpaid carers to pay back thousands of pounds just because they've taken on a low-paid, part-time job. So please, could we consider setting up a bespoke team to help affected unpaid carers navigate that system? Thank you.
Yeah, I think you're absolutely right. It's a really important part. And I know certainly the work that the Carers Centre do is really prominent at that. They identify the issues that mostly affect carers and that they come to mostly. The information and advice that they give out and the support that the networks can provide is something that's really important. And absolutely, you're right, we can look at how we need to take that agenda item forward as it comes, as it emerges with the budget pressures.
Basically, I just want there to be a central team that a carer in crisis can ring up for that legal, financial advice when they get hit with that envelope saying, "You owe us £8,000", or something like that.
Could I just say that we have an advice line, that we have a really kind solicitor who provides us with legal advice and clinics for carers every month. And on top of that, we actually, we have a project which is on fuel poverty and which is around income maximisation and part of that.
Especially for the winter fuel allowance, yeah.
Especially, well, it's for the winter fuel allowance. It's for trying to ensure that carers get the maximum amount of income that they can so that they can then move forward with their lives. And so we have one that is specifically on fuel poverty and on giving out small grants to carers as well around that.
Wonderful. Could you potentially send me like either a website or an email address, just so in case any of my constituents come to me and saying, "I need help with this", that I can just direct them straight to that, please?
Thank you councillor Setwell. I think that all of us would appreciate that across the council too. Councillor Argenzia, welcome.
Good morning, thank you. And apologies for being late. I was in record time here for the NHS. So thank you so much for the report. I mean, it's really good to see the progress so far and it's really good to see how collaborative and cooperative the approach is. And I think we know it's the only way we can do this. I'm particularly interested in the crisis situation. Because obviously, if we can identify carers early on, we can avoid those crises. And I was just thinking back to the dementia strategy launch and how we were talking about that. It's what one of our aims is to ensure crises are inevitable sometimes, but, you know, how to support people. So I'm really glad to hear that there is a full line. I wonder whether that is on the Sheffield directory? How to contact, you know, if you're a carer? Because there is a tab for carers, isn't there? So if it's not there, maybe we should ensure that it does go there so that people can be directed to the right place, including, you know, GPs and professionals. I was wondering also whether you could illustrate if any work is being done for minoritised communities, especially those communities that tend to look after their own? Because we know that of the people that we care for, in adults at least, only 10% come from minoritised communities. Whilst, you know, the broader population of Sheffield tells us there's more, the percentage is higher. So I would assume that there are more carers there that maybe we realise, maybe we've done some work on it already. And also in terms of young carers, obviously being a young carer, we are so grateful to all carers, but the impact that it has on opportunities and, you know, prospects for the future can be huge. Do we do any work with schools to identify young carers? Because that, for me, would be a good place to start. Because, you know, being a young carer can impact on attendance. So when schools do work on attendance, do they look for signs that a child is actually looking after someone in their family? And that's maybe why they're absent. We may already be doing that, but it would be good to, you know, kind of make those links if we aren't already doing it. But thank you so much for the work. And I think it's really important to, you know, stress something that Lee said, the fact that the work is never finished, basically, the strategy. Because we have that transient kind of 20,000 people, we'll stop caring. 20,000 people a year, on average, will come back in. So we kind of re- issuing the same things over and over again. But it's brilliant to see the progress in just a few months.
We are doing, over the last 18 months, we have done considerably more work in communities. And so we have someone, and a lot of her role is going into communities across the city and talking to community members, talking to carers in those communities. And we are now getting people within different communities registering with us that previously they weren't. So that is, that is increasing, so, which is fantastic. We are, we are committed to being here for all carers in the city. And we see it as our job to reach them and to ensure that we are able to support them where they want, how they want and when they want. So that's what we are working towards. And there has been considerable amount of work in that area. So, and that will continue, that's not going to stop. We, the, we also have carer support groups across the city. We're aiming to increase those. The, what we are also doing is looking at the activities and having it so that we are online as well as face-to-face. Because we know that we have carers who can't leave their houses because of their caring responsibilities. So it's important to be able to reach people in different ways. And we are aiming to take on some work, which is about digital exclusion, so that we can support carers who are vulnerable and isolated in their homes, but that don't have that digital technology knowledge. So we're doing some work to move forward on that. Lee, you wanted to do?
Yeah. And just in relation to schools, Sheffield Young Carers do have a schools network. And I think there's around 100 schools that have signed up to it. And part of the purpose of that group is to be more aware of young carers and to identify more young carers. I think they would say, if they were here, Sheffield Young Carers would probably say that it has been tricky in terms of, it's very much an ongoing issue around persuading schools to allocate resource to it. Because obviously, there's a lot of pressure with schools as well and budgets and things. But yeah, and one of the other positive things is that as a council, we've decided to sign up to No Wrong Doors, which is considered best practice in supporting young people by CQC. So we're looking at redoing things like the Young Carers Needs Assessment, looking at the Transitions Assessment. And we do have a Young Carers Register as well. So once we identify young carers, they go over to that register. So we know where they are. But yeah, there's work being done, but I think more work to be done would be the verdict, I think, on that one.
And just to add to that, we've also got, as part of the multi-agency work, we have a strategy group, which meets twice a year. We do that. So we meet one time, four times a year, actually, in school holidays and out of school holidays to make sure that young carers can come and contribute towards that. But part of that multi-agency group, we actually have representatives from school services, but also from the universities. Because that's an important part where we can recognise some young carers that are trying to move into education and make sure they continue in their caring role. And that means that we often come across carers from other places too, that are basing themselves in Sheffield.
Thank you. I've got councillor McLean and then councillor Milson.
Thank you councillor Sorrentine. And thank you so much for coming today. I've got two things I'd like to ask and say. Firstly, to say thank you, the report is just really full. It's so good to hear what's happening. When you read the report, you look on your website, you hear about all the work you're doing from the advice line, the legal advice stuff, there's all the support groups. It's just really, it's really good to hear the numbers are going up. So just thank you so much. And I think back in June, during National Carers Week, we had a visit booked in for the committee to come to the Carers Cafe on Friday morning in the town hall, which we sadly had to cancel because of the rules surrounding the pre-election period for the general election. So we had a brief chat about it in our briefing last week. And I think the committee would really like to put us a date in. I think we sit in here and make a lot of decisions, but it would be really good just to come and connect with people and just have a chat and hear what it's like on the ground. We'd really value that, so if that's okay, we'd really love to do that. And then the other question I had was, I think we've talked before, haven't we, Mary? About how there was a talk, a bit of a strategy refresh. What we heard from carers was that what they actually wanted was a delivery plan because they were happy with the strategy. And I noticed that this delivery plan runs till 2025. And I just wondered if we'd start to think about what's going to happen after that? I'd just be interested to know. Thank you.
As far as the Carers Cafe is concerned, you're most welcome. It's, it's on the second Friday of every month. It is downstairs. And I will send some dates so that you can decide when you want to come along.
And in terms of the delivery plan and the update, part of that strategy meeting that meets, we refresh and go through the delivery plan, make sure all the actions are live and real. And again, we'll be doing that at the next one, which is in the spring.
Thank you councillor Milson.
Thank you. I got really worried when councillor Setwell, I don't know, you seem to imply that the information isn't very readily available. But I think it's really easy to find, actually. So I quickly Googled while you were speaking, Sheffield Carers Centre Help With Cost Of Living. Matters of information, top of the Google results, not a problem. And the, I think the Carers Centre website is really good, very, very clear. I love the fact that you can increase the font size, you can, there's a clear text-to-speech button at the top. Love all that. And I did notice that there's stuff there under the Carer Money Matters page about, specifically information for unpaid carers who are also in employment. That's, that's like, that's there straight away. So that was really good. And then I spotted information for businesses with employees that are unpaid carers. And that led me to a question that I'd noted down, which is about the Carers Strategy Implementation Group, where I'd put a little query to myself, just to ask whether that implementation group includes partners and stakeholders from schools, from further and higher education, from the employer sector as well, from Business Sheffield, Chamber of Commerce, Federation of Small Businesses, you know, local, large employers? Whether they're all involved in that implementation group? I thought that was quite an interesting thing to find out. Also, I wanted to quickly ask about whether, what, what kind of support there is. This is a little bit specific, but what kind of support there is for young carers? If they need to move away for education or a job or whatever? Is there actually kind of practical and emotional support for people in that position? Because it must be actually potentially quite traumatic to have to leave your caring situation when you've been, you know, a primary carer for a parent, say, for a number of years. And that has to end. That must be quite a traumatic point in a young person's life. And then if I can just sneak in just another question. Is there ICB support for the Sheffield Carers Centre? Is that, there's a little note about that in the report. I just want, what are the early indications from the ICB? In terms of developing a shared and integrated responsibility for supporting unpaid carers, given the huge burden that's lifted from the NHS by unpaid carers and what they do? Thank you.
In terms of the implementation group, there are, it's a very multi-agency group. We've got hospital representation, we've got ICB representation, we have education on there. And like I said, we also have people from the universities. I think you've raised it, maybe business enterprise, that's probably some area that we need to maybe look at a little bit further and make sure that we're linking across to industry and to business. That's something that we can very much look at. In terms of your question around young carers and that support for transitions, we, as Lee said, we've just signed up to No Wrong Doors, which is the, seeing best practice for supporting young carers. And that has an area of work around transitions. We also do have a working group and we're working with our children's services and Sheffield Young Carers to think about transition plans. And that's exactly to cover that gap that you just mentioned, that, that area where people that, young carers are actually looking to go away to education to start making plans for the future and what that means. And then from that, we're developed, there'll be a pathway developed from how we interlink between children's and adult services. But I'm making sure that we're picking up on the necessary areas from Sheffield Young Carer Support through to Carers Centre Support as they become adults. And the final thing, sorry, you mentioned about the ICB as well, sorry, yes. So currently, the Carers Centre contract is funded through Sheffield City Council and from public health. Majority of that is Sheffield City Council. As part of the contract arrangements, the support is to help information and advice and identify young carers. But there is an element of the contract that then also has for the Carers Centre to undertake carers' assessments and to put in the appropriate support plans funded by us. And we monitor that and their approach to that. Currently, ICB don't contribute towards that. We have actually requested that they consider doing that going forward. I guess we've slightly been a victim of our own success in that we've really identified a lot more carers than ever and that we could anticipate, which is brilliant and absolutely something that we don't want to move away from. But that has meant that a lot of the support that the Carers Centre are supporting, I'm not going to talk for you, but is that low-level support, which wouldn't actually necessarily hit a carers' assessment or CARE Act responsibilities, but is about the health and wellbeing and maintaining the health of carers. So we have approached ICB to help contribute towards the contract. We haven't been successful in getting that funding yet. But I know there are plans ahead and maybe Alexis can talk. I know you've been working with the ICB to try and to address that.
Alexis wants to come in to support answer and then councillor Milson, if you come back quickly.
So just as an update, apologies, I wasn't sure if that was working there. What we've noted is I've raised the issue about the demand, but also the, you know, the financial situation with colleagues in ICB. What we've done is we have a joint group in which we discuss openly, you know, issues of kind of joint hand, you know, collectively together. So one of the things we've done is we've noted it within the committee report is that we're committed to looking at a strategic review collectively together. Because I think that's, that's what we've got to go and do. And from that, to look at the entirety of the activity that's going on across health and care, then to look at how that takes us into going away forward. So that, that's noted within the committee report. And that's what we'll take forward into 2025, 2026. Because I think that, you know, as a system, and I think the reason for one of the recommendations is, is city partners to look at the support to unpaid carers. It's because as you go into 2025, that's what we want to go and look at, is how our city partners as a whole are thinking about how we support unpaid carers. You know, it's absolutely valued. And, you know, without all the valuable supports around, you know, we wouldn't be able to function as a system. So this is actually important.
Thank you. Quickly, please councillor.
Yeah, I just wanted to note this, you know, that support for unpaid carers is a deeply shared priority, isn't it? Across the whole committee and it's a shared political priority that we've all expressed from time to time. And, I mean, it's really heartening when you see your words as a councillor coming back in a report to you, you know. So we really do feel we're all working together, I think. But if there's, if there's anything that could be done to accelerate that conversation with the ICB, I'd be very interested in that space. I think councillor Argenzio is nodding as well. Maybe it's something that sits with the Health and Care Partnership for a discussion? So noted sort of thing, yeah.
Okay, thank you. I think obviously there's a breadth of interest and agreement and consensus on this item. So thank you very much for bringing it and thank you for the report again. Our recommendations are on page 108, which as Mary outlined, they are for the Adult Health and Social Care Policy Committee to note the positive progress made on the Carers Delivery Plan 2225, to reaffirm our commitment to people who are unpaid carers across the city so they feel recognised, valued and supported, to acknowledge actions that have not yet been completed that will drive positive change for carers to acknowledge actions that have not yet been completed that will drive positive change for carers, and that the committee is asked to recognise and request that city partners support and work in partnership to contribute to and generate income to further support and value unpaid carers across the city. Are we all agreed on that? Excellent. Thank you. That is agreed unanimously. So we'll move on to item 12, which is our DAS update. This is on page, page 151 of our agenda packs. If officers could get your name badges and pop them at the front for the webcast, please. Thank you.
So this is open and then I'll hand over to Rebecca. So just want to, this is our quarterly DAS update to committee. And as always, I just want to say a massive thank you to, to, to all the care sector who do a wonderful job every single day. And, and to, to all my team who are really committed to taking forward great changes, we've seen at committee, and also to all elected members who have been supporting us on our journey through, through, through adult care, you know. And, and today, you know, given the update around the CQC update, our performance update and what we're doing about that, but also the kind of horizon scan. And impotently, we just want to kind of note today is the update around our high-level planning and also the work that we're doing to respond to unmet need in the city, because that's, that's really quite important. And if I just kind of note around the high-level plan, and I'll hand over to Rebecca. It's one of the key things that we've done all this year. It is, is we've really, so two years ago, the, the first adult care strategy was endorsed by committee. And over the last couple of years, we've done a huge amount to go and deliver upon the commitments made upon the strategy. And we've been able to deliver and demonstrate that through all the, the different papers to, to committee. And it's been a really great achievement to go and say that and do that. And what we've been doing over this year to try and support a refresh then, you know, around the priorities and, and the partnerships is, is over this year, we've been checking and challenging across the city as to what remains, you know, key priorities, but equally, how, more importantly, is how do we deliver upon these? And in, in the past, what we've done is brought milestones, but what we've really done over the last couple of years is developed really robust partnerships. Particularly like our Autism Partnership, you know, board, the Lebensbarriere Partnership Board, dementia partnership board, our Carers Strategy Implementation Group, just heard here, you know, and, and, and our personalisation board, you know. And what all these have done equally, we're safeguarding arrangements and partnerships. And what all these partnerships do now is help us to deliver fundamentally on all our strategies. So the high-level plan is aimed to try and be quite, you know, straightforward so that we can see on a page what we're trying to achieve, the key priorities, and then really simply is that we deliver through our partnerships in the city, which I think is really tantamount, and we can reflect on the approach we've tried to take around collaboration and partnership across the city, and particularly putting the views and voices of people with lived experience at the heart of all that we do. So, so that's the, that, that really is the summary I just wanted to kind of note for the committee today. And then what we'll go and do is kind of time to go and engage with our workforce, engage with partners to make sure that it resonates. And then look back to bring back to committee as a formal, a, a high-level plan and plan for endorsement going into 25 to 27 as we do that. So, so that, that's just all I wanted to say at that point, and hopefully that's helpful. And then the other bit is just to note that one of the key things for me has been to reflect and identify unmet need. Because as we've been going through our journey of change, you know, for me, it's been important that we really understand and think about, you know, particularly that unmet need in the paper. The appendix really highlights the work that we're doing to, to, to reflect the, the unmet need in the city. And I particularly just want to draw attention as the reason for the essential impairment strategy earlier on today is because that's one of the key areas of unmet need that we, we really highlighted. So I'm really glad that we're taking forward that kind of action to, to support, you know, particularly around, around, particularly support deaf people and people with a visual impairment across the city. And then sort of finally around technology-enabled care, I just want to say is that, you know, there's been a huge amount of great work across the teams around technology-enabled care. And one of the kind of key things for me has been, is actually kind of trying to embed that as a approach in our way of working. And I've actually just been invited to this national working group around technology-enabled care as an adult, which is really quite good for Sheffield and brings some national kind of positive attention to what we're doing. So that's really good. And then a sort of final bit to say is that we have been developing an adults partnership board. And one of the commitments that we made earlier on this year through our climate statement was actually to develop that partnership board, but actually to go and look at collectively the issues affected by climate together. So we had partnership boards last week focused on climate across academia and the care sector, very good session. And we all just started to report on the outcomes of that work in future committees. So that's all I want to say.
Hello, I'm Rebecca Dixon. I'm the Service Manager for Care Governance and Improvement. So as Alexis said, this is just the quarterly update from the DAS on the strategy developments in adult care and wellbeing. So I'm just going to run through some of the current highlights. And the purpose of the report is to ensure that members have consistent information and a strategic overview of all the activity that's happening across adult care and wellbeing and how we're addressing key issues. So, safe and well, we've continued our waiting well principles as standard practice across all services, outlined in the Working With People Delivery Plan update in October 24. Our system-wide discharge model is still continuing to develop, which we reported to committee in June alongside winter pressures as we're in that kind of, that time of year. We're also working with the housing sector to ensure we have sufficient housing-based care, which includes the initiation of a complex care programme. Aspire and Achieve and Connected Engaged, we launched our dementia strategy in November on 27th to improve support and the experiences of people with dementia, but also their families and carers, and making sure they have support. The 4th to the 8th of November was Occupational Therapy Week, so we did a number of events there to raise awareness of occupational therapy and the key role it can play in terms of keeping people independent and well in the home. We're preparing to refresh the involvement delivery plan for 25 to 27. And that's really to achieve our ambitions for co-production and good engagement. In terms of active and independent, in September, which we reported to committee, we launched our independent living centre and training facilities for our workforce. We celebrated how we deliver support that's personalised in November as part of Personalisation Week. And then for efficient and effective, on the 29th of October, we launched our Care Academy, which was a really key thing to support social care and training across the city in terms of developing and also promoting social care as a career to try and help with some of those recruitment and retention issues that we're experiencing across the sector. The local account, which David talked to earlier. And then looking ahead to February 25, we're having another event to celebrate everyone who contributes to the provision of care and support in Sheffield. And that's really important to us in terms of recognising the contribution people make, including unpaid carers. ADAS have released their Autumn Survey, which highlights a number of issues impacting on social care. No real surprises, but covering things like the budgets in social care, how social care can make savings, prevention, the transfer from hospital to communities and the transition from analogue to digital services. CQC, we're continuing our preparations planned. Notifications of assessment are still being regularly released, though we've not had ours yet. We're currently literally in the middle of an LGA peer review, which we've invited as a sort of dress rehearsal and to review our preparations for CQC. So they're actually down at Moorfoot at the moment, talking to staff. And I know some members have been involved in that, so thank you. That will also help us test and validate how well we know ourselves. And of course, we will be feeding back to members via this committee, but also individual briefings. In terms of our performance, improvements in some key areas. So our assessment weights continue to drop. They're now standing at 36 days compared to 44 days in September. The percentage of safeguarding referrals screened in one working day now stands at 86% compared to 84% in September. And median number of days to put care and support in place is now seven days compared to 10 days in September. So some key improvements there, which obviously make a real difference to people's experiences of social care. In terms of some of our risk areas, annual reviews have dropped to 64% compared to 66% in September. So we have a lot of key activity around understanding why that is and how we capture that information, you know, what is review? There's informal review, formal reviews, so try and pick some of that. The percentage of safeguarding referrals that have had feedback, again, has, has dropped to 78% compared to 83% in September. So still high, but equally, we want to understand what's going on there. And in terms of hospital discharge, as I said, we're kind of very much in winter pressures. The number of beds occupied by people who are ready to be discharged currently stands at 16.6% compared to 15.4% in September. I don't think that's that surprising in a way because of winter pressures, but equally, obviously, we're working as a system in terms of our discharge approaches. So as I said, we have a number of mitigations in place. And one of the key things is developing our understanding of performance and data. And as part of our CQC preparations, we've developed a performance pack, which we're going to use as part of our assurance tomorrow activity, but also deep dive into some of those issues so we really understand what's going on.
Thank you very much. Does anyone have any comments or questions on this report? councillor Milson.
I've just got a little question around the CQC element. And the DAS report, you know, talking about the weaknesses early on in the CQC assessment process. And thank goodness that's sort of transparent and in the public domain and being talked about sensibly. And we're not in a sort of hideous, obstid situation. So, you know, it feels like it's relatively healthy in terms of a conversation, but I just wondered if, if Sheffield is sort of called up early, fairly early on in the cycle of assessments. So if our turn comes soon, how confident do we feel about the process?
So I think, should we answer that in two ways? In terms of the local authority assurance, that's, that is continuing. And what we're using is the LGA peer review is a real test for us to, to have a dry run for the process and to take any learning from this so that we are absolutely prepared. So as, you know, so if we get a call, say, early January, you know, we're really, are as prepared as we could be, you know, for, for, for the CQC assurance. And I think the key thing, you know, I've learned through inspections and assurance over the years is that you've really got to know yourself, you know, know your strengths and know you're doing really well, but also know your areas for improvement. And, you know, you, you can never, you know, for, for me, it's about knowing yourself. And if you, when you've got areas of improvement, it's about recognising that and being really prepared and going into an assurance process with that. The worst thing is when you don't know yourself. That's really is the crux of it. So I think that for us, I think there's been an awful lot of work done by our teams over the last, you know, four years in fact. You know, and I think, you know, the, the peer review will, will support us to, to go into that with our best foot forward. And already we've had really good learning, I think, from just the learning, you know, in, in terms of mechanics of doing it. So, so that's good. And I think the other part of the DAS review was in terms of the wider care sector and the NHS. And basically there was a range of backlogs in terms of the assessments, you know, for provider services that are regulated. And we're, I'm well aware that now that some of these backlogs are being addressed and certainly, you know, locally within Sheffield, I think, you know, we've seen it with our own regulated services, we're now starting to see some, you know, churn from it a bit more in terms of getting information and data through. So I think that's helpful. And, you know, quite key to us has been also with work, kind of particularly with regulated and provider services, is we've got a good local working relationship with CQC. And that, I think, helps, you know, just to make sure that we're all, you know, quite working together. So that's, that's kind of a key update.
And just in terms of our preparation, CQC and our publishing the reports for the local areas, we've had their assessment on our website. So we're going through those, obviously looking for clues about what they might do as key lines of inquiry. But also that'll be helpful in terms of our reassurance of the process when CQC come in, that actually they are being consistent in terms of how they've looked at other areas and other authorities.
Thank you. Has anyone else got any other comments or questions? Okay, thank you. Our recommendations are on page 152. It's recommended that the Adult Health and Social Care Policy Committee note the progress in delivering upon the adult care strategy, Living The Life You Want To Live, to note performance updates and areas for prioritization and focus, to note our technology-enabled care roadmap, to note our approach to, towards reviewing unmet need, endorsing the Living Your Life You Want To Live High Level Delivery Plan for 24 to 26, note the preparations for the LGA peer review and CQC assessment, and to note the development of the co-production statement of intent aligned with the council's engagement statement of intent. Are we all agreed? Excellent. That's resolving unanimously. Thank you very much. So we'll move on to item 13, which is 24 to 25 quarter two budget monitoring. If officers want to come to the desk and find your name placard and pop it over the desk for the webcast, please. Thank you. If you want to introduce yourself for the webcast, thank you.
Thank you, Chair. I'm Jane Millby, Assistant Director of Finance and Accounting. And I'm here today to provide the committee with an update on the financial position for the second quarter of 24 to 25, which includes six months of accounts up to the 30th of September and a six-month forecast to the end of the year. The full report was taken to the Finance and Performance Committee on the 18th of November. It's important for committees to consider the overall financial context of the council when considering decisions that impact on committee budgets. The council is reporting an overspend of £34 million against budget, which is approximately 7% of net revenue budget. The council plans to fund the in-year deficit through a combination of drawing from reserves and use of a specific provision set aside to manage our housing subsidy loss issue. The financial position is driven by three main factors: funding reductions, increased demand and rising costs. We've experienced significant funding reductions across local government and Sheffield has £858 less to spend per household in real terms compared to 2010-11, which is a reduction of 26%, well above the national average of 18%. We're experiencing increased demand for our services, particularly from our most vulnerable citizens. And post-COVID, we've faced significant levels of inflation impacting on our cost base. £34 million overspend is substantial and our offices are working diligently to develop solutions to reduce key areas of overspend. The position has remained stable from the quarter one downturn, but targeted work from finance with service colleagues over the last quarter has helped us understand drivers of cost challenges and develop collaborative action plans. We're forecast to deliver 40 of the 42 million savings targets this year, which is a 95% success rate. The main challenges remain in budgets for education and children's services, housing, finance and performance and adult social care committees with significant overspends. These issues are due to the home-to-school transport for children with special educational needs, tackling increased homelessness and rising demand for costs in adult social care. The adult social care committee budgets are forecast to overspend by £9.5 million at quarter two. This is a 6% variance to the net revenue budget. As mentioned earlier, savings delivery is strong in year with £29.4 of the £29.9 million target set to be delivered this year. The main budget challenges sit within the purchasing budgets with a £7.1 million overspend, in particular care costs for those with complex needs. The service is also a staffing overspend of £2 million. The service is focused on addressing these budget challenges through their recovery plan as outlined in item 10. The purpose of the recovery plan is to reduce costs relating to underlying pressures which contribute to the overspend. A focus on reducing and rebalancing the cost of care remains a priority for the service. And as referenced today, it's become even more challenging following the government's announcements to the changes in national insurance contributions and national living wage rates, which will impact our providers. The council's key response to our financial challenges is the Future Sheffield Programme, which is focused on transforming our services to create a more sustainable and efficient operating model. Transformation is essential to ensure that we can continue to deliver statutory services and support city growth. Our transformation efforts align with the council's broader strategic goals and play a significant role in our budget setting process this year. Our medium-term financial strategy published in July identified a budget gap of £68 million over the next four years, with 31 falling into next year. The Autumn Statement from Government indicated a 3.2% real-term increase in core spending power for 25-26, including a 4.99% council tax increase, which is better than our original planning assumptions. The government plans to reform funding allocation, starting with a targeted approach in 25-26, followed by a broader redistribution from 26-27. This should result in a clearer, multi-year financial outlook, aiding strategic planning and resource management. Services have worked hard to develop savings proposals to bridge next year's gap. And a full report will be presented to the Finance Performance Committee next week on the 16th of December to present the current position. We expect to receive full details of the finance settlement around the same time. We expect to receive full details of the finance settlement around the same time, and details will be worked through in January and presented to the Strategy and Resources Committee in February, ahead of full council approval in March. The paper is to note the financial position at quarter two, and I'm happy to take any questions about the report.
Thank you, Jane. Does anyone have any questions or comments on the report? All right. Thank you very much for taking the time to come to this committee as always. And our recommendations are on page 193, where the Adult Health and Social Care Policy Committee is recommended to note the updated information on the 24/25 revenue budget outturn as described in this report, including the detailed committee budget monitoring information and the management actions provided. Are we all agreed? Excellent, that's agreed unanimously, thank you very much. So move on to item 13, which is, no, item 14, which is short breaks. If officers want to come to the desk, find your name badge and pop it up for the webcast, please, thank you. This is on page 207 of your agenda packs, with recommendations for approval on page 209. If you want to introduce yourselves, please.
Yep, thank you. I'm Amy Budry, I'm Assistant Director of Commissioning for Children and Families.
Hi, I'm Sue Eggleshaw, I'm the Service Manager for the Children with a Disabilities Team, which also includes the Short Breaks service.
Okay, thank you. So the report that we're sharing with you outlines our intention to recommission our contracted short breaks activity clubs, which form part of our short breaks offer for children, young people and families in the city. This was approved by Education, Children and Families Committee on the 5th of November, and it's been brought to this committee for noting. So we've currently got a number of providers on our club framework for this provision, and we're coming to the end of that contracted period. So our intention is to go out through a commissioning process, through a procurement tendering process, to recommission that activity. And this forms part of our statutory duties as a local authority to provide activities, excuse me, outside of the home for children with disabilities, and to provide respite provision for parents and carers also. So our intention with the new framework will be that the activity will be provided across three lots. One will be daytime short breaks, which will be for all levels of need. One lot will be for outward bounds activity, and one lot will be for activity-based residential. Happy to take questions, thank you.
Thank you, that was nice and succinct. Do we have any questions or comments from the committee? All right, thank you. We have recommendations on page 209, which are to note that the Education, Children and Families Committee on the 5th of November 2024, recommissioning of a four-year plus potential extension year of the short breaks framework agreement through a competitive tender process with the open market; to note that the Education, Children and Families Committee on the 5th of November 2024 approved the inclusion of outward bounds at a static level over four years, and activity-based residential short breaks on the new framework; and to note that the Education, Children and Families Committee on the 5th of November 2024 also approved the overall four-year budget, £5,750,000 for lots one and two on the new framework, lot three, activity-based residential short breaks budget to be identified and agreed at a further date. Are we all agreed in noting that? Excellent, that's unanimous. Thank you very much for taking the time to come to us today. We're cooking on gas. So item 15 then, it's Sheffield Adult Safeguarding Annual Report and Multi-Agency Safeguarding Hub update. If officers want to, again, come to the desk and find your name badge, pop it up for the purposes of the webcast, please, thank you. This is on page 231 of your agenda packs, with recommendations for approval on page 232.
Hi, good morning. Andrew Drummond, Safeguarding Quality Assurance Service Manager.
Hi, I'm Catherine Dunton again, Director of Quality.
Okay, thank you. So I've come today in follow-up to where we came in September, in the usual governance cycle, where we brought the safeguarding report and delivery plan. And today's the purpose of providing an update on the Adult Multi-Agency Safeguarding Hub, the MASH, to also provide a, last time Adam came and discussed the Safeguarding Board Annual Report, and that's been attached this time, and also a slide pack where we talk about measures in place for quality assurance. So I just wanted to take a couple of key highlights out of that update in regard to the MASH, and then Adam touch on the annual report, and some highlights from that. So particularly from the MASH, we just wanted to really highlight the improved information sharing, particularly where the huddles that we have twice a week with partners are really, really effective. And also outside of huddles, we've got better groups for information sharing at the right time, and where we see where things have gone wrong in safeguarding adults' reviews, information sharing being a theme, and we've done a lot of good work in this area to make sure information is shared at the right time. Also want to highlight an increase in safeguarding concerns, which the report details, but as was highlighted within the DASH report as well consistently, particularly within MASH, we are screening under one day on a consistent basis so we can assess risk and take appropriate action at the right time. There's lots more within that as well, so invite any questions as we go. In regard to the Board Annual Report, I just want to pass over to Adam to add any key highlights in regard to the work that the Safeguarding Customer Forum gives in regards to supporting the annual report.
Thank you, Andrew. So as I said last time, some key highlights from this year, what we did this year is we, again, we support, generally support, the scrutiny committees, the SASP structures, which is on the annual report, so I'm not going to go through every one of the ones. The key highlights what we did this year is we, the forum actually helped co-produce this year plan for, which came to the last scrutiny book, which was quite a good one. And the last one I would actually say that we did is, which is a bit of a curveball, we actually worked quite closely with Howland University to try and do a project, which there was some research around COVID and adult social care and isolation, which I think is a key one for this committee as well to scrutinise as well. So I think that's the key one, the, what we did this year. And going forward, there's a lot more in the pipeline coming through, so it'd be good if from Andrew and Alexis, if you want any other updates throughout the year on what we're doing, I'm happy to come along, so I'll leave it at that.
Okay, thank you. Does anyone have any questions or comments? Councillor Agens, yeah?
Just more of a comment, I would just want to say thank you for bringing the report back to us as part of the peer review, we were talking about the MASH just yesterday. And the fact that we have in more referrals, it just shows that we're working better and we're not missing things. And also, like, I'm just on page 235, just looking at the number that get actually progressed to section 42, proportionally they're not gone up that much, just, but I think it's really important that people know that they can make that referral and how to make that the referral, and the work of the MASH, although, you know, there are teething problems sometimes about, you know, having the physical space for people to be in the same room. I think it's really important, and from attending the Adult Safeguarding, whatever SASP stands for, Sheffield Adult Safeguarding Partnership Board, there you are, I know that how much the involvement of all the partners, you know, the police, you know, the people we lived experience, how much difference that has made. And I think we need to get to the point where there's nobody falling through the cracks, which is why we're doing so much work on it. So thank you for bringing the report back to us.
Thank you. Councillor Nelson?
Thank you. A little niche question, just about the recognition of cuckooing, which is something that really sparked my interest. So there's partnership working described very briefly around recognition of cuckooing, and I just wondered, is that a partnership with South Yorkshire Police specifically, and how it looks in practice, whether there's any kind of positive outcomes from that that you're able to share? I'd be quite interested to hear that. And just about the financial implication, so looking at page 240 with the overspend forecast, I think, I mean, everyone agrees that investing in the MASH, we've, you know, the committee's agreed before that investing in the MASH is really important, and to the extent that it's constantly able to respond to every referral in a timely way, we've all supported that. It's just the way it comes across in the report sounds slightly negative, just like, because it has to be described as a pressure. That is a really negative word. So just wanted to, you know, sort of say, we have all supported the investment in that and we continue to do so. And I just wondered if you can put some context behind that as well, about how that the front door triage approach of the MASH contributes to potential operational savings elsewhere in the health and care system? Just to put that pressure in a perhaps a more positive light.
Yeah, thank you. So to put the finance, the context into a bit of our perspective, and thank you for your support on that. So earlier in the year, we did have some agency support in place where we recognised the increase and where we looked at the data. So at that point picked up the concern and making sure we could see people at an early point to make sure we had them risk mitigations in place and supported them, supported people in Sheffield to keep them safe. And at that point, we had them conversations with Alexis, had some agency support in place, and they recognised as well that was consistently, the number of referrals that were coming in, wherever a level where we needed more resource. And that was supported to have extra recruitment within MASH, and there were an extra five permanent members of staff now, which the report details. And we felt that was necessary to make sure that where we are screening under one day consistently now, that's able to happen because of that extra resource in place. And doing that at that right time is making sure that that's not, as you say, further savings aren't necessarily easy to measure, but it's, for example, making sure that somebody is, and there's not financial abuse that continues, which then becomes something which becomes a bigger issue, or the impact on domestic abuse services and other areas around the council and statutory organisations, I would add on that. And that's not ourselves in isolation, as I say, where the MASH huddles are, where we need to input between multiple partners, we will speak to other organisations at an early point as well. In regard to cuckooing, I wouldn't say necessarily we're at a point yet to talk about any outcomes, but we're in a much better place longer term to report on where we have instances of cuckooing. So in the past, like, for example, in our recording system in Liquid Logic, we just had the 10 CARE Act areas of abuse neglected, whereas now we've expanded that to make sure we're reflecting and making sure we've got the themes in, so like cuckooing or hoarding and other areas that might be, I'd say, themes that are picked up on a regular basis, that we need to identify particularly and see whether there needs to be a particular focus. So we could look at that a bit more detail and report in more the future safeguarding updates about the work that MASH and other teams in helping care and wellbeing are doing when it comes to cuckooing.
I think it's also one area, I think, the forum will be probably looking at in our next cycle for our business plan, just because I think we can support need as well, it's, we think a lot of it might be, it's often heard, all might get drawn into that cuckooing sort of arena. So I think it's one thing the forum might look at next year as well. So it'd be working partnership with Andrew and his team.
Thank you. Any further questions or comments? Councillor Agens, yeah?
Just very quickly, just in response to councillor Nelson, cuckooing has been discussed at length on the SASP as something that was, you know, I remember two years ago was something that was really difficult to record, and it's actually something that has been kind of, kind of pushed a bit further up the agenda, which I think is brilliant because it does affect some of our most vulnerable residents. So it is, you know, something that we discuss virtually every meeting actually that I've been on.
Thank you. Right, oh, councillor Brooker.
Thank you, just following on the theme of cuckooing. Certainly in my board ACAD meetings, it's something that crops up regularly, where we've got the multi-agency working with the police, housing, social workers, people like that. So it may well be worth something taken up with the CAD, just to get a feel of what's going on locally as well as what the strategic picture is, because I think that's quite important.
Yeah, thank you, councillor Brooker, that's definitely something for us all to take away to our local areas as well. Thank you very much for the report. We have recommendations on page 232, which are to note the progress made with implementing the Adult Multi-Agency Safeguarding Hub, to endorse the Sheffield Adult Safeguarding Board Annual Report, and to endorse the approach to quality assurance of adult safeguarding. Are we all agreed? Excellent, thank you, that is agreed unanimously. Thank you very much, everyone, and yeah, for sitting in this rather cold town hall for the last couple of hours. And this is the first time I've chaired one of these. Thank you all for keeping to time and for making it rather easy for me. So with that, I'll bring the meeting to a close. Yeah?